I'd like to call this meeting the Clay County Commission to Order. We will begin with our invocation. President Jeff Barnes will lead us in prayer, so please proceed. Oh, and by the way, as he makes his way up, anybody speaking before the commission, make sure that the green light is on on the microphone. Speak clearly into the microphone and identify yourself for the audio recorder. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. So my name is Jeff Barnes, as was mentioned. I'm from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. I'm serving in a stake presidency and helped to oversee 12 different congregations here in the Liberty, Kansas City area across the county. I'll now bow my head and pray. Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity we have tonight to gather in this commissioners' meeting. We're grateful for this free land and country which we live in, which allows us this democracy and the ability to gather together in these types of functions. We pray for the leaders of our country, that they might be blessed, that they might make wise decisions in as to the direction of our country. We pray particularly this evening for the commissioners as they contemplate and discuss and deliberate some of the needs and affairs of the residents and the citizens of Clay County. We pray that as decisions are made, they might make those that are best for all involved and have a remembrance of their faith and our faith. And we're grateful for Jesus Christ and for all that He has done for us, for His atoning sacrifice. Again, we express our gratitude for the opportunity to be here this evening and exercise our democracy and freedoms of this wonderful land in which we live. And we say these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Withington.
Here.
Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Commissioner Wagner.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Excuse me. With that, is there a motion related to the approval of this evening's agenda? Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any question or comment? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda is public comments. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any issues present? Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There is one item on this evening's consent agenda, that is Resolution 2023-291, approving invoice payments for Clay County from September 2nd through September 8th for 428 invoices that total $775,181.66.
Are there any questions or comments before I go for a motion? Seeing none, if there's a motion, Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-292. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-292 is consideration of the invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office from September 2nd through September 8th. There are 11 invoices totaling $1,928.06.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-292? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. Move to approve 2023-292.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-292. Is there, are there any questions or any comments? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
I recuse myself.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes, five in favor, one recusal.
Next item on this evening's regular agenda is 2023-293. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-293 is approving the apportionment of the fines, interest, and escrow of Clay County. This comes from the Treasurer's Office. This is an annual housekeeping issue, and I believe Treasurer Nance is in the audience and can provide information or answer any questions the commission has.
Mrs. Treasurer?
Yes, Bob Nance, Treasurer for Clay County. I think she explained it very well. It's something we do every September. We do not have on there today, but later we're going to bring in money for the flood monies for taxes. But this is figured by the clerk as far as what the schools get. They decide their enrollment, and they get proportionate.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the Treasurer? Seeing none, are there any other questions or comments in general? Seeing none, is there a motion related to 2023-293? Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve 2023-293.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-293. Further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to 2023-297. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-297 is approving and signing a professional services agreement with Vinstra and Kim for engineering services.
Are there questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner?
I move to approve 2023-297.
Motion has been made for approval of 2023-297. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on this evening's agenda is 2023 Ordinance 22. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 22 is approving an ordinance modification to amend the 2023 parks fee schedule to add the fishing boat rental to the program. And Assistant Park Director John Davis is here for continuation of discussion from last week.
Thank you. Please proceed.
John Davis, Deputy Director of Parks. Come back this week with, after discussion last week, with some rates. We'll still go, like to do $175 for full day use. Half-day use, we've broken down to $87.50. Hourly rate would be $40 an hour, and then would have a two-hour minimum. This is, and then anything exceeding either the half-day or full-day would be $40 an hour on top of that.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Wagner?
I'm ready to make a motion.
If there's no further question, please make your motion.
I move to approve 2023 Ordinance 22.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 22. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next item on this evening's agenda is 2023 Ordinance 23. Administrator?
2023 Ordinance 23 is a consideration of an ordinance that re-appropriates and revises the adopted 2023 budget in the amount of $3,695 for the second half of a grant. And Director Driscoll is here to present some information and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner?
I'm looking over to see if he's going to get up or make... No. He's not going to sell past the sale, so that's fine. No problem. Move to approve 2023 Ordinance 23.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023 Ordinance 23. It would seem there is a comment to be had, so please proceed.
I do not have information on that. I did not receive any information on that. That was probably done for historic sites, and I did not receive any information.
Okay.
So if I could, this is a grant that the historic sites participated in with the City of Liberty. The grant was given in two portions. We've already accepted and amended the budget for the first half. This is receiving the second half of the grant, and so your action tonight simply is revising the budget so that we can receive those funds and then spin those funds.
Are there any comments or questions further from the commission? Seeing none, there is a motion on the floor. If there are no further comments, Commissioner Wagner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on the agenda is 2023-290. Administrator?
Resolution 2023-290 is consideration of approving Clay County parks to participate in the United States Area Corps of Engineers Fee-Free Day on National Public Lands Day, which will be September 23rd. And Director Driscoll is here to provide information about that program.
Are there any comments or questions of the Administrator? Please proceed.
Thank you. Mike Driscoll, Parks Director. We would like to follow the initiative of the Corps of Engineers for this Fee-Free Day on the National Public Lands Day, September 23rd of this year. We felt like it was a good time, a good fit on National Public Lands Day to go along with this. They have several other days throughout the year, but for this year, we just wanted to get in on this date and celebrate the National Public Lands Day. We have no, this is just for day use, boat ramps, not for camping or special events or any of the shelter rentals, things like that. So all we would like to do is have the permission to participate in this initiative this year on National Public Lands Day, September 23rd.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, Commissioner Wagner?
I think you move to approve 2023-290.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-290. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Final three items are bundled together on today's regular agenda. That would be 2023-294, 2023-295... Oh, excuse me, there is one after that, though. And 2023-296, and then we will get to our final... No, no, that is, that is, yeah. So we have those three final ones. I'm sorry, it was on a different line, so it threw me for a moment. So those last three items, Administrator?
Yes. Resolution 2023-294, 295, and 296 are companion resolutions regarding the rezoning, the preliminary plat, and the final plat for the Maloney Meadow subdivision. And Director Jones is here to do a presentation and answer any questions the commission has.
Please proceed.
Kip Jones, Planning Director. And I'm okay to just to sit down if Commissioner Wagner wants to make a motion. I just thought I'd throw it out there. Okay, all right. So this is a rezoning, preliminary, and final plat request. Got it pulled up on the screen. It's highlighted in blue. The entire property is approximately 192 acres. It's unplatted, currently zoned agricultural. It exists as one lot, has one single-family home on it, and you can see it has access actually from two roads, Nation Road on the east side and 188th Street to the north. So the proposal is to divide the property basically into six lots. There would be five platted lots that you can see on the screen currently. So we've got two 20-acre lots in the back that are served by an access easement, and then there are three 10-acre lots in the front that have access off of Nation Road. So as I stated, there is currently a single-family residence on the property. There's actually only going to be two accesses off of Nation Road for the five lots. Lot one, four, and five would share an access off of Nation Road, and lots two and three would also share an access. So early on in this process, there were concerns expressed, especially from the neighbor to the north. So planning staff, the highway department, the developer, and the adjacent property owner to the north met on site, and that red line that just went up on the screen was the original access easement proposed by the developer, which went along that property line to the north. Everyone agreed to move that access easement a little farther to the south and only have two accesses of Nation Road as a compromise. So everybody agreed to that, developer, neighbor, highway staff, and planning and zoning. So that's the proposal. With all of our cases, we talk about the comprehensive plan and the rezoning criteria. This has located the rural low-density tier, which allows five-plus acre lots, as long as they meet the rest of the requirements of the county, and it has those six rezoning criteria that both staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt had been addressed. Here is the surrounding area, so this is our subject parcel right there. This is the rest of the acreage. That's a really bad drawing, but this is not part of the plat because it meets one of the exemptions. It's 40-plus acres with 100 feet of road frontage with access, so that does not have to be included in the plat. My understanding is the developer is going to leave that as farmland and just farm that section of the property. And I should point out, this is, you can see all these yellow, smallish lots. Those are three-to-five acre lots that were platted in the '70s with interior streets. The current comp plan calls for five-plus acre lots in this area. You know, there could be an argument made for putting an interior street with higher density development in this area, but it is in the rural low-density tier. That's not typically where the current comprehensive plan wants to see that type of development. So staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt the proposal best meets the comprehensive plan and the Land Development Code. We did receive multiple phone calls with this case leading up to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. As I stated, I think most of those concerns were compromised and dealt with. We did not receive any stated objection during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We met our public notice requirements, including 41 letters, and we received no objections from outside agencies, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval with five conditions. I want to talk about a couple of those conditions. The applicant did agree to the conditions, and really the biggest condition was the highway department requested road improvements from 188th Street to 181st Street. That's about three-quarters of a mile. They are requiring that the developer micro-surface and stripe that section of road to improve Nation Road in that area. So that's how planning and zoning voted. I am happy to answer any questions, and a representative of the applicant is present as well.
Are there any questions of Mr. Jones from the commission or comments? Seeing none, if the applicant is present, certainly, they're welcome to come up and make whatever comments they see fit.
We're fine. Most of you have questions.
Very good. No comments from the applicant. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Is there a motion related to 2023-294, 295, and 296? Mr. Wagner?
I think you move to approve 2023-294, 2023-295, and 2023-296. With all boxes checked, approve.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2023-294, 295, and 296 with the boxes marked "approved." Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Wagner.
Hi.
Commissioner Lawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Withington.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
That completes the regular agenda for this evening. That brings us to discussion items. There are two items under discussion. The first one is Citizens Academy Program, and that is administration.
Yes, so Administrative Services Officer Jacobs is here to present a potential new program that we would like to present for the commission's consideration of a Citizens Academy, and that I'll turn it over to Dieter.
Please proceed.
Good evening. Dieter Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. How are we? Good? We're here to propose a new program, Citizens Academy, and our goal is to increase involvement of the citizens within the county. It's a very exciting opportunity. It's something that the Sheriff's Department has used to continue support and involvement in their processes and to help educate the community in how they work. We're proposing a six-week program. It would be limited at the current time to 20 citizens. Application would be on our website so that they could apply. It'd be a first-come, first-served type program. It'd be about two hours a week, 6:30 to 8:30 because we are not providing dinner. So that would allow individuals who work the opportunity to get something to eat before attending the academy. We're proposing two academies a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. We would also like to propose that a commissioner attend each of those meetings to provide a welcome and a little bit of background about yourself and your district, if that's something that you'd be interested in. We'd hold the sessions at multiple county facilities so that we could further share the opportunities that the county provides to its citizens. Class participants would be encouraged to attend either Planning and Zoning or Commission Meeting during the course of the academy. That way, they could actually see things in action. And then at the end of the six-week program, we would have a formal recognition of the graduates during a Commission Meeting. We would have session themes or class themes. Those are, the initial one would be the introduction to county government, county government 101, starting with federal, state, county, and city, and kind of divide that up so people understand what our actual obligations and commitments are and that we govern the unincorporated parts of the county and to help them understand what we are working with. Then dollars and cents, have members of the assessor, collector, and auditor of budgeting come in and kind of talk about where their tax dollars go and how it's utilized. County development, planning and zoning, GIS, and highway, let them know how their information, how these things work, how the county has developed, kind of what Director Jones has already gone over with you just previous, how that process works. It gets plotted, and then obviously highway and roads way. Judicial, public administrator, sheriff's department, prosecutor, and the courts. Tell a little bit about how those things work together and how they can help the citizens and how the citizens can help those departments to better serve our community. Parks and leisure are always interesting because it helps us expand upon the use of our parks and our historical sites and get the word out. And then how to become more involved in the county, whether that's to become a county member, to expand upon other tourism sites within the county, great restaurants, great nightlife that they can share in, volunteer for boards and commissions, how they can actually get involved and how we can help them. Potential cost for this program would be for the provided snacks and drinks during each of those sessions and an item of recognition for each participant. So I brought examples of maybe like a soft-sided cooler or the backpack or a shirt with the county seal or something of that nature, so it would recognize them for their participation and their commitment to the county and the time that they had given us to learn about our county and how we serve them. So we're looking at about $1,200 a year for this program in the beginning stages. We're also hoping that we can coordinate with the Sheriff's Department and encourage members that have already participated with the Sheriff's Department to participate with us and vice versa. So again, continued support for the county. Any questions?
Commissioner Lawson, I believe you are seeking recognition.
Yeah, a couple of questions. You're saying there's going to be 20 people in the spring and 20 people in the fall?
Initially, that's what we were planning for.
Okay. And how are those people chosen?
There would be an application on our website, and it would be a first-come, first-served. We would encourage people to sign up for that. We would put information out on the website, do some flyers, and maybe even a press release.
Okay.
Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. I'll just say, I believe that an educated citizenry is one that engages and can then understand how they can make change, and so I am certainly very supportive of this myself. We did it in the city of Kansas City for several years. I think they still continue to do that, and I find that those who want to be more engaged, look for opportunities to learn more about the county, city, whatever the case may be, and so I have a feeling your spots will fill up quickly. I will just point out that it always seemed that there would be a bump in interest right before an election, which is good because you want folks who are running for things to understand how the jurisdiction they want to run for, how it operates. And so my opinion is $1,200 is a small price to pay to educate our citizens on how they can best interact with us, so I say go forth and prosper, so.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, sir. I just want to echo those sentiments. I think it's a great idea. I'm familiar with this in other cities. It's a great program. As long as you get people to sign up, I think it's really good. I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Commissioner Withington?
Yeah, I think this is a good idea. I did the City of Gladstone Citizens Academy several years ago. Yeah, so I think it's good. Maybe you guys can include a topic some night on, and explain property taxes and sales taxes to people.
That's under dollars and cents, sir, absolutely.
Everybody likes to think that just because the county collects, we set all those tax levies. We're not the bad guy. We're doing our part. But yeah, maybe you guys explain that to them.
One of the goals.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah, I just agree with everybody. I think it sounds like a great idea and glad we can do it with such a small budget, so thanks for getting creative in that regard. One, just quick, and it's just semantics, but Citizens Academy, is a person who's a resident of Clay County who may not be a naturalized citizen, are they still eligible to participate? Does it just mean citizen of Clay County sort of a thing?
Yes, just a citizen of Clay County. It's not, right. Anyone who resides within the county.
Just any resident, yeah.
And actually, we would hope that eventually even business owners that may not live in the county, but they have businesses in the county, we would love to have them come and go through the program also.
All right. Good deal. Thanks.
When is it that you anticipate this beginning? Would it be this spring coming up, or would you be able to get it going as quickly as this fall? That seems awfully, awfully fast.
We were just looking for interest from the commission to see if this is a program that they wanted to support and for us to move forward with. We were looking at the 2024 year and in the spring so that we can get through this tax season and really put some effort into this program because you have to maintain their interest. We can't be boring. We have to be fun, so.
I kind of assumed that, but I did want to verify that, so hopefully if things go well, we'll be looking at the spring of '24 to be bringing some citizens online to go some citizens online to go through this class. Any further questions or comments?
Uh, I would just like, we, we love that you're supportive of this program. I think we have shared with you all that we're getting ready to really kick off our public outreach for the comprehensive plan. And so at many of the activities, the fall festivals, GLAD Fest, the Liberty Festival, we are actually, the county is going to have a booth. So part of it will be engaging the public about the comp plan, but we're also going to take the opportunity at that booth space to share information about jobs that are available, and we're going to try and put a flyer on this particular program to get education and awareness out of it, um, to anyone that's interested for the 2024 program. So, uh, marketing will be key.
So the sense I get from the comments is that the commission would like the administrator to go forward, staff to go forward in putting this together. I see head nods all around. So is that what you really need from us, administrator?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you very much. That concludes the discussion on the Citizens Academy. Uh, next item for discussion is healthcare renewal, and that is human resources.
Um, yes, so thank you, Commissioner. As you know, this time of year, we start looking at our healthcare renewal, um, and not only the plans themselves, but also the rates and getting ready for open enrollment that happens in the fall. So I'd like to introduce Human Resources Director Kim Callahan, who is going to go through some information for you and present information and proposals and engage you in discussion.
Director, please proceed.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Kim Callahan, HR Director. This is Human Resources' favorite time of the year, benefits renewal and open enrollment. While we try to do the best we can for our employees, we realize we need to be fiscally responsible to the Clay County taxpayers. So I'm going to go through, there's about eight slides that will show the 2024 employment, employee benefit program that we're recommending, and then we'll answer questions. And Matt Kroll from CBiz, our broker, is here also to help answer questions in more detail. So, let's see. So Delta Dental, IMED Vision, and Lincoln Long-Term Disability, rates are guaranteed, so nothing is changing with them this year. Right now, our MetLife A&amp;D and voluntary life is out to market because they proposed a 39% increase. So that is out to market right now, our life insurance. Right now, we have decided on Curaleak for our EAP program. We marketed it due to continued service issues with our current EAP program provider. So with Curaleak as our EAP, EAP provider for 2024, this will include a new onsite therapy. The county will have a dedicated therapist onsite, no less than eight hours per month. An employee can schedule a session at no cost during work hours, and Blue KC has agreed to allow the county to fund the therapist through the county's Blue KC Wellness Fund, so that will be no additional cost to us. So this is the marketing results. CBiz, our broker, did market the plans, okay? With Aetna, they declined to quote "fully insured" due to our claims utilization. They did propose a self-funded a 7.7% to 23% increase plus runout cost, which at this time are estimated to be approximately $800,000. So Cigna declined to quote "due to claim utilization," and United Healthcare, they proposed a 2.9% increase, fully insured, plus the runout cost. The one thing that's not unusual for new providers to lowball initial offers and then increase the second year. So Blue KC, we are recommending that we go with the Blue KC Cost Plus, which is an increase from 8.6% to 16.9%. It's an increased wellness fund from $25,000 to $45,000 for onsite therapy, and that is the plan that we are recommending. So the current plans would stay the same. We have not this, well, I'll explain the difference. SPYRA, high deductible, preferred care, high deductible, and our Blue Select Plus EPO plan. So the plan changes would be the increase in SPYRA and preferred care, high deductible plans, they're deductible per the IRS guidelines. We also, the change will be the onsite counseling provided by Curaleak for a minimum of eight hours per month funded through the Blue KC Wellness Fund. Medical plan comparison, these are the highlights that show the areas of change. As you can see, the individual deductible on SPYRA Care and Preferred Care goes from $3,000 to $3,200. For family, it goes from $6,000 to $6,400. Maximum out-of-pocket on SPYRA Care would go from individual, from $3,000 to $3,200, and the family would go from $6,000 to $6,400. Again, these are mandated by the IRS, these deductibles. So the financial impact, we are a Cost Plus plan, and based on our history and claims, Blue Cross is anticipating that our liability this year will be 5.9. I'm saying next year. Did I say this year? 5.9, next year. So if we look at the expected liability claims at 5.9, our fixed cost fees that totals 1.7, the total for the year would be 7.6. The maximum liability would be 6.5 plus the fixed costs at 1.7. So at the very worst, for the year, it would be 8.2. And Matt did point out to me, the 7.6 on a good year, it might even be better if our claims aren't, this is what they're expecting, looking at what we've had through this year. So it could even be better, but the max would be the 8.2. These are the proposed rate changes. We're recommending funding based on the expected claims and fixed costs, funding the 7.7 million, which is an increase of $642,000 from this year. Okay, this rate proposal will be a cost share with the county paying 52% of the increase. The employees will be paying 45% of the increase with the balance being covered by retirees and COBRS. And we also are recommending this year that the county pay 100% for employee-only on the SPYRA Care plan. That's the very top line there. We have 131 employees on that right now. And to be competitive in the market, we looked at other counties and other cities, and most of them are providing at least one plan that's paid for the employee. And so SPYRA Care, that would be saving them $40.96 a month for our employee only. Like I say, right now, we have 131 people on that plan. So the financial analysis on the 20, under this proposal, the revenues for 2024, employee premiums will cover 11%. The employer premiums will cover 86%, and retiree COBRA premiums will cover 3%. The total revenues are the 7.7 that I just went over in the previous slide. So the expenditures based on claims, maximum claims, it's, it would be 6.5, that's 79%. The fixed cost at 1.7, which is 21%. So the total potential expenditures are 8.2. And again, we've been working towards a cost share of 80/20 with the employer paying 80 and the employee paying 20, 20%. And last slide, why are we not recommending funding the estimated maximum claim? What we're looking at here is we're recommending funding the expected claims, okay? Our beginning balance on January of 2024 will be 1.657, okay? So our revenues will be 7.7, our fixed cost 1.7, and estimated claims at 5.9 will leave our ending cash balance at 1.692. So if you go over it, look at funding the maximum claims, what the max would be that we would have to cover, our beginning balance, the beginning of the year will be 1.657. The revenue, 7.7, fixed costs, 1.7, and then estimated claims at 6.5, we'll still end up with ending cash at 1.098, which would be the absolute worst scenario, worst-case scenario. So, we, we believe we won't hit the maximum. We're trying to minimize and set premiums sufficiently, but not aggressively. So I know that's a lot of information, and, and we're hoping to answer your questions and return next week and get approval so we can get started on our open enrollment forms and setups and ADP, and, you know, we're under a time crunch for that. But it's like, I'm here to answer questions. Matt Kroll from CBiz is here and our administrator, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Commissioner Wagner.
Uh, thank you very much, and thanks for the work, Kim. Appreciate that. I tend to think that what you've presented is probably the best way to go, partially because we did not have a whole lot of alternatives. And based on your first slide, that suggests that at least two, if I remember correctly, two did not bid because of claim utilization, kind of, kinds of sends a little red flag to me that suggests that if, if that is the trend of, if we have high claim utilization as our trend here, that suggests to me that over time, cost containment becomes a problem. The number keeps going up, and the number of people who would actually bid on our business will go down because of our history. And so I, I don't know, Kim, or if you would like to take the question, but I guess I have a real concern about claim utilization. I'm, I'm curious as to what that really looks like and what is driving that? And then, um, what does that mean when we come back next year? Are we looking at similar sorts of rises in those premiums and so on and so on and so on? So I'll let you check that.
Sure. No, all good questions. Again, I'm Matt Kroll with CBiz. Good evening to everyone. Thanks for having me. When we talk about medical trend or healthcare inflation, like our own actuarial team, for example, at CBiz, who will help our clients that are purely self-funded put together their premium equivalents, it's between 8 and 10%, okay? So that's healthcare inflation, and that's also pharmacy inflation as well. We actually, prior to getting the information back from the market, our actuarial team put together some projections, and it came in a little bit higher than where Blue Cross with Shield's renewal came in. So we had a pretty good feeling of where, um, Blue Cross was going to be. We didn't know on some others because of the unique arrangement that Blue Cross with Shield has under your Cost Plus plan. Some wanted to quote "fully insured," some declined to quote "fully insured." There's a little bit of risk on your plan, as Kim pointed out, where you have two different numbers. They expect you to run, and then you have that maximum liability in case things go bad, Blue Cross with Shield will cover everything over that. So back to your question about what's driving it, you know, there are some large claimants, but that's to be expected with any size group, especially a group the size of the county. Those are hard to contain at this particular point. Certainly, our goal is to try to help the county through wellness initiatives, stop somebody else from getting into that high claimant bucket. Sometimes it can help, sometimes it's just unavoidable with certain things that may pop up. It's just unfortunate, the past 20 years, we've seen healthcare inflation be between 8, 9, and 10%. So we're still battling that, and a lot of that is trend increase. One of the great benefits about the county's plan is if you don't run to that 7.6 million, and it's under that, that money's not turned over to Blue Cross with Shield. The county holds onto that. We look at the fully insured arrangement through United Healthcare. It's a lower increase. If things ran well, they keep that excess money. The key point to that, where we didn't consider it moving forward, is we would have to terminate the Blue Cross with Shield plan and then pay runout costs, which could be up to $750,000, $800,000. I don't know if I answered your question directly, because I went a couple of different topics there, but.
Yeah, no, extremely helpful. I, I guess what that prompts me to ask is if, you know, if you're kind of, I don't want to say locked into, to Blue Cross, Blue Shield, but in many respects, based on your answers, it's kind of like, it's hard to move off of that or move to another insurer based on the structure that Blue Cross has, which I understand. Guess my question then becomes, i- if, if we wanted to contain those costs, and let's say, for example, that we don't hit those maximums and we, there are some savings there, do you take those savings to get, to help us get into a position to do a different kind of plan that has better cost containment, like, like a self-funded plan, for example?
Sure. Yeah, no.
And I guess I'm looking for, if you can answer it, is, is, is this the best we can do, or are there things that we can do to get to the best we can do?
Yeah, I think the goal is to get to where you just mentioned, to try to build up those reserves a little bit more, to take care of runout, and then if we did start a self-funded, a purely self-funded arrangement, then to build up those reserves for starting that new plan. And I think the county's in good shape with their reserves. I think we build it up a little bit more, and then we have a good plan year. We can start looking at some of those options where we're doing a lot of great things, where Blue Cross with Shield has a lot of tools built into their current plan. There could be some other leverage you could pull when you go self-funded. And what I mean by that is you could look at carving out the pharmacy benefit card. You could look at carving out the stop-loss insurance. Right now, it's all bundled, not to mention some other cost containment programs as well. We're just not there yet.
Yeah.
But I think we are, and I think Diana could attest this as well, working to try and get there.
Yeah. I, I would say, and I'll, then I'll be quiet like others to speak, but I guess I'd be curious to know, if there is a threshold, what is that threshold? And if, if you don't have to know it today, but I, but I think, my concern is just that those numbers are going to continue to escalate, so whatever we can do to create containment. But that also, to your point, I think then gets into, well, if you want to go to the self-funded route, you better have reserves on hand, and knowing what that is, I think becomes important for us as we get into next budget cycles and beyond.
Sure.
So that kind of help, I think, would be, would be great for us to have.
Yeah, absolutely. And we'll continue to review, monitor, and look at those options going forward. There's just a little bit more risk. You have some risk right now, but it just increases a bit, and, and that's fine, you know, as long as we're prepared for it and, you know, have it budgeted and know what those, you know, rainy days could look like in the event that, you know, things aren't performing well, because as we all know, especially with a group your size, I mean, usually one and a half out of five years aren't great, you know, but those other three and a half are. So I, I would credit the county over the past few years, we've only been involved about a year, but, you know, managing the plan that you're on with the reserves that are built up is great because we work with, well, there's just others not, you know, that exact situation as well, where you don't have the option because in the past, you haven't built up some excess reserves to, to account for what that liability could be.
So, so if I could answer just a couple of your questions, Scott, when you said, you know, if the claims are less than expected, because really that's what we're recommending, the revenue for next year, basically meet the expected plus administrative fixed costs. So if that doesn't happen, if we have a great claims year, those funds, excess funds, will stay in the health fund and build up that fund balance. And remember, if we change from Cost Plus, whether we go right now, the chart said Aetna would, gave us a bid if we went self-funded with them, then we'd have the runout cost. So whatever we have in that fund balance, the first thing we have to, to basically earmark is the runout cost, which is around right now, this year, estimated, you know, around $800,000. Even if we stay with Blue Cross, Blue Shield and go to a self-funded plan, we have the runout cost, which surprised me, but we do. And so those are things, and so if we, if we were to do it today, we're sitting at 1.6. Then I take half of it, is now got to be set aside for those runout claims. And so walking into a self-funded plan with as many lives as we have, with the utilization that we have, $800,000 sitting there in a reserve is not sufficient. So to your point about continuing to build on that and then look at those opportunities to go self-funded in the future, is certainly something we're working towards. It's just unless we raise rates, both on the county and the employees substantially, to build up a fund balance to do that, and with the economic conditions that we have, not only, who knows what will happen, you know, with sales tax with the county next year, and also our employees are facing, you know, the grocery store every day, we really felt like it was prudent to really just fund for what expected costs are anticipated to be next year.
Commissioner Johnson.
Just a quick question for either Kim or Diana. Are our employees who retire able to stay in our healthcare plan if they pay their own way, once they retire? Are they done?
Yeah, they pay the full amount, say, the retirees from the sheriff's department, and until they hit Medicare, and then they go on Medicare.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Carpenter.
Thanks. Thanks for all your work on this. So I don't, I don't have access to like this in a digital forum yet, so I, so I'm unable to see the numbers unless, unless you go back to the pages on the.
Want me to go back to that page?
Well, so, so I've just got a couple of questions on, on some bottom-line cost changes for county employees. You went over the deductible change from $3,000 to $3,200.
Yes.
And $6,000 to $6,400 for families.
Yes.
And that's total out-of-pocket, too. I was a little unclear in terms of the premium changes.
Very last row, that, that's the change, okay? Like the first one, that's the SPYRA Care employee only, they won't have to pay the $40.96, so that's a negative there. But all the other plans, you can see that would be the increase.
And that's the monthly increase?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, um, so, yeah, so help me understand the $40.96 again, if you could.
The 40 what now?
The, the $40.96 change.
Oh, okay, that, that is right now what an employee pays per month. Oh, okay, that, that is right now what an employee pays per month for the Employee Only Spira Care Plan. They pay $40.96 a month, so it's $20 and some change each pay period. So what we're proposing is just to cover that for the employee. So we can say we do have an employee-covered plan, you know, for the 131 employees that we have, employee-only on Spira Care, so it would not cost them anything. They would still get the $160 a month HSA that would go towards their high deductible plan, because it is increasing to $3,200.
Understood. So you're saying that they're going to save $40.96 per month compared to right now?
Right now, they're paying $40.96.
So in effect, what we're doing is sort of shifting the cost onto the folks who are under the other plans.
Right. I mean, you can see on Spira Care, the family goes up to 244. If you have a family of three or four, I mean, $244 a month is, you could, you know, Matt can attest to other plans in other counties that he has on these rates.
Yeah, it's a very generous, rich contribution strategy across the board of employee-only and the dependent tiers as well. You know, as Kim mentioned, $244 to ensure the full family coming out pre-tax from their paycheck, it's, it's a very rich offering.
Yeah, I got it. So essentially, we're trying to incentivize folks to move to the employee-only category, or at least more fairly distribute the costs of the plans relatively?
Well, I think the, what the county is trying to accomplish is, as rich as a contribution strategy is, where it shows the percentages of what you're paying towards the different tiers, we still didn't have that 100% paid-for plan. And so trying to have 100% free, if you will, to those individuals that participate into the Spira Plan, we were trying to accomplish that this year, and that's what this illustration shows. So you will see on that Blue Select Plus EPO and the Preferred Care Blue HSA, there's probably going to be some migration into that top plan when there realizes not premium associated with it.
Yeah, I mean, I would expect so. I mean, those are pretty sizable increases on the other plans. All right. And then so, taken in total, based upon the estimates, I assume that those estimates account for the estimated migration, but the total premium contribution will go up, because I think what I saw was from, and it's, I don't, it's not on this page, but from 9% up to 11% or something.
Oh, yeah, I think that's on the next, right, from 8 to 11. And ours goes down from 89 to 86.
So the 8 to 11, you know, it's about almost $300,000 extra in premiums. Does that account for the, any anticipated migration, or is that just if you took employees from their current plans and moved them?
Yeah, currently, yes, it's tough to kind of predict the migration, so that's just with the current enrollment. If it stayed the current enrollment, that's how the numbers would shake out.
Okay. But it could, so the premium increase may well be a little less than that if folks migrate to the free plan option.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I think I've got a better understanding. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, and I apologize. I was in my, in my former position, I was on the Health Trust Board for Kansas City, and so I kind of get in the weeds a little bit, and I apologize. There is no wellness incentive baked into any of this, right?
It's something that we've talked about, and we're working with CBiz to see how we can make that happen.
Yeah.
It didn't happen this year, but it's something I think you might have with other counties, and it's something that we certainly want to do.
Yeah, I mean, and I will be the first to admit that sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't, but depending on your pool, and I know the pool that I was in a few years ago, the high number of, you know, heart-related issues, all those things lent themselves to try to see how you could affect that, which in turn could hopefully deal with some of your long-term costs. So I get it if it's not here, but I guess my, my request is, as you look at the next year, some, some sort of wellness program, which I think in our case resulted in some, some premium drops, and I think if I, if I'm not mistaken, the KC Police Department did something, I think they, they did something similar before the city did, and they continue to do that, just a request to see how that might help us in the coming years. So appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Thompson.
It's me. The other one. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Kim, for putting this together. Okay, thank you so much. My question for you is, is, I know on the last slide, we were on, when we were talking to Commissioner Carpenter, do we have, like, the show that actually reflects what employees are paying this year compared to the change for next, next go-around?
Let me look at it.
Do we have that? So we can see the comparison?
I don't, no, I don't guess we do.
I want to make sure I didn't miss it somewhere, if there was on the other side.
No, you're right. It just is showing the percentage of change in the amount.
Well, the dollar amount in the bar right column that says the employee change.
Yeah.
That is the comparison to what they're paying right now this year to what they would be paying with these new rates. So while we don't show you what the premium is, we do show you the dollar amount, that it would go up.
Okay.
So for example, the first one is, right now, employees on Spira Care Employee Only, pay $40.96 a month. So since the proposal is the county would pay all of that, that's a negative number, right?
Yeah, okay.
So for someone that is Spira with the employee and spouse, then their premium per month would go up $102.
It's going to go up, okay. Okay, okay.
You're talking about one of our rate sheets, and I apologize, I should have included that.
I'm just seeing it that way, yes. So it's just slightly formatted differently. Is there any way that we could get access to this for the next week, so we can just kind of look through it?
Yeah, to get access to this presentation?
Yeah, be wonderful. Nope, that's all I needed. Thanks.
Are there any more questions or comments or discussion? Seeing none, Administrator, what are you looking for from us? Just a please proceed on these lines?
Correct, because as, as Kim mentioned, you know, it's HR's favorite time of year. It takes a while for whatever changes we put together to put into the system so employees can do open enrollment, and then we can get it all lined up to make any changes if they switch plans for January to be ready to go. So the intent is to bring it back to the Commission next week for your approval, so if there are other direction. And I do think, you know, the changes to the deductible are unfortunately out of our hands, those are IRS regulations, and we have to accommodate that. I do think it is a benefit for our employees to be, bring on onsite counseling that employees will have access to, saves them money, because there's no co-pay. Also, the ability for them to have those hours during the workday and not have to use accrued time or have to travel. We're starting out with a minimum of eight hours to see the interest with that, but we do believe that is a benefit to our employees to have timely counseling that they can get in and speak to individuals.
I think that many employees may find that a good thing to have, and then so I'm sure they will avail themselves to that as they see fit. Is it the consensus, then, that the administration go forward and bring this up next week? I see head nods all the way around, so. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. That concludes our discussion items. That brings us to reports. I believe we have two reports.
Yes, there are two reports in the Commission's packet. The first item is the Pleasant Valley Road District Number Eight. It is their annual financial report from January 1st to December 31st, 2022. And then we also have the Auditor's Cash Basis Monthly Report, ending August of 2023.
Okay, that brings us to county administrator comments.
Just one, and that is that the next Commission meeting will be next Thursday, the 21st, 6 o'clock here in the chambers.
That brings us to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Withington.
Yeah, so I just want to say, you know, the definition of insanity is doing things the same way over and over and expecting this, a different result. This, you know, when you look at the chain of command and the organizational structure of the county government, citizens, county commission, administration, and so on and so forth. So I think this commission needs to start setting, doing more leadership when it comes to our roads and bridges in this county. Since we're working on our budget, I would like to see included in this year's budget a 10-year road plan. I've been asking for a 10-year road plan since I got elected, haven't seen one. It's embarrassing when our citizens don't even know what roads are going to be done after we, when we approve the budget. So for this year's budget, I would like to see a 10-year road plan, and I would actually like to know what roads are going to be improved before we approve the budget for 2024.
Commissioner Lawson.
I'll say amen to that. I just want to, this is kind of a personal note, if you'll allow me some personal musings here. I think everyone heard that, that our auditor withdrew from the race for his state race, and he's going to remain with the commission, or with our, with the county, and not run for another office. So while it's the state's loss, it's our gain, and I'm just tickled to death that he's staying, and we don't have to worry about naming somebody else to his job, because that kid has got it all together. He is an amazing auditor and a great person, so I'm tickled to death to still have our auditor.
Commissioner Wagner. Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, no comment? Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Carpenter?
No, no comments. I don't think. Go Chiefs. We're getting done in time tonight, so.
In the interest of getting us out of here just a little after 7:00, I have no comments to make either. That brings us to recess and adjournment. We are adjourned. Thank you.